I'd like to call to order the regular city council meeting for Monday, August 17th. Would you please rise for an invocation by Larry Kettle from Bridge to Life Church?
Thank you, let's pray. Father God, we thank you so much that we live in this country, that we have so many privileges. We thank you that you have endowed us, our Creator with inalienable rights, life, liberty, the pursuit of happiness. I pray, Lord, that you would grant our city councilmen wisdom, that you would give them your encouragement. I pray that they could know that their community supports them and that we pray for them and we care about them and we ask you, Lord, that you would keep them encouraged as they do what is often a difficult task. We pray, Lord, that you would reward them. We pray that you would keep our city safe. We pray that you would keep our city prosperous and we thank you, Father, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Do you want me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Call the roll, please.
Mayor Greer is excused. Mayor Protem Weed.
Here.
Council members Brown.
Present.
Ekstrom.
Here.
Ketchmar.
Here.
Bates.
Here.
Shoraki.
Here.
Frida.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the August 3 regular city council meeting. Could I have a motion? Ron?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, we make the motion. We approve the minutes of August 3, 2015, regular city council meeting.
Second.
Second.
Second from Colby.
Is there any discussion, any comments? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Bates.
Aye.
Councilmember Ketchmar.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Councilmember Frida.
Aye.
Councilmember Shoraki.
Aye.
Councilmember Ekstrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Third item, council members announcements. Are there any council members announcements? Scott?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. We have a public works committee meeting at 4:00 PM next door this Wednesday.
Thank you. Any others? Pat?
Yes, Mayor Protem. I would just like to compliment and send out a big thank you to the Co-Mom group that did the dental event this weekend. I volunteered there for a couple of days and it was amazing, truly a masterpiece of organization and they did so much good. These professionals and volunteers were just awesome and we need to give them a big thank you. They did indeed help a lot of people. The other thing is that we have a charrette coming up this Thursday, the 20th, from 7 to 9 at the Abbey. The EPA will be here. This concerns the Lincoln Park Cotter Mill Superfund Site here in Fremont County. So the EPA will be here with the Colorado State Department of Health to solicit information from the public as to how we would like to see that site maintained in perpetuity. This, they will, the EPA will bring examples of what other communities have done around the country with similar kinds of things. So, we have a chance to turn this into really something wonderful if we so choose, but we really need everybody's input on this. It could be an industrial site, it could be, well, there's just a lot of ideas and we need to hear from everybody. So I urge you to be there, 7 to 9, the Abbey, Thursday, and come bring your ideas because this is very, very important to our community. And lastly, there is a planning commission meeting tomorrow at 7 here in this room.
Thank you. Are there any other announcements? I would also like to take the opportunity to commend Doctors Alex Van Acker and John Kearney, who were the two local dentists that were responsible for the organization of the Co-Mom event in our community. They did an absolutely outstanding job. I know a handful of people who were able to take advantage of it and everything I heard was that it was amazingly well organized, very efficient. I don't think they had the wait times that they were expecting, so.
Not at all. People went through, it, I just have to repeat, it was a masterpiece of organization. It really was.
It was fun to watch it come together. Okay. Item number four is the adoption of the agenda and the consent agenda. Would the clerk review the consent agenda items, please?
Mayor Protem Weed, in the absence of the city administrator, will go through the consent agenda items. First is the authorization of the city clerk signature, has the election official on an IGA with Fremont County to conduct the coordinated election November 3. Next is authorizing a temporary street closure. This would close Sixth Street between the alley north of Main Street and the alley north of Macon and Macon Avenue between Sixth and Seventh Streets on Friday, September 11th from noon to 11:30 PM and September 12th from 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM. This is for the annual Italian festival sponsored by the Sons of Italy. Next on the agenda is authorizing another temporary street closure for closure of Seventh Street between Harrison and Rudd on Monday, September 7th from noon to 8:00 PM. This is for a block party sponsored by the Vineyard Christian Fellowship. Next is Resolution 14. This was discussed and recommended at the June 17 Public Works Committee. It will adopt the Fremont County Hazard Mitigation Plan as this jurisdiction's multi-hazardous mitigation plan, which is necessary for local governments to receive disaster funds should a disaster occur in the future. And lastly, on the consent agenda is the list of bills.
Thank you. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda? Lacking none, could I get a motion and a second from council? Councilman Ekstrom?
Thank you. I make a motion that we adopt the agenda and consent agenda as it reads.
Second.
Second from Councilwoman Frida. Is there any discussion on the motion? Could you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Ekstrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Frida.
Aye.
Councilmember Shoraki.
Aye.
Councilmember Bates.
Aye.
Councilmember Ketchmar.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
The next item on the agenda is the administrator's report. Kathy, could you do that for Doug?
Glad to. Some good news again on the sales tax revenues. They continue to be up every month this year compared to the same month as in 2014. He has, in his report, that this, it's been up 7.24% through June of this year compared to the first six months of last year. Also, he wanted to update you on the 5 and 600 blocks up and beyond his stated update and report. The contract was brought in today, signed by the contractor, and they plan to hold a pre-con meeting sometime this week, so that is moving forward as planned. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Kathy. Next item on the agenda is ordinance number eight, series of 2015, on second reading. Kathy, could you read the ordinance by title, please?
This is a bill for ordinance number eight, series of 2015, an ordinance referring to the eligible electors of the City of Canyon City's November 3, 2015 general election. The question of whether the city's sales and use tax rate should be increased by 1% with all revenue therefrom to be spent exclusively for the construction, reconstruction, repair and maintenance of streets, roads and bridges within the city, fixing the ballot title and question and setting forth other details relating thereto.
Could I get a motion from council? Councilman Bates?
Yeah, I make a recommendation. We approve ordinance number eight, series of 2015, on second reading.
I'll second.
Second from Councilman Ekstrom. Is there any discussion? Councilman Ekstrom?
Well, thank you. I don't know if this is the appropriate time, but am I looking at a possible modification to that?
Yeah, this would be the time to bring it up.
Okay. Well, in a recent meeting, it was brought to our attention that we might have a better chance of getting this ordinance to pass if, or this, if we put a sunset clause in the ordinance as it reads. You want me to speak up louder? Okay. I will try to speak up louder without yelling, but, um, once again, in a, on a current meeting, it was brought to our attention that we might have a better chance of being successful on this particular ballot issue if we added a sunset clause to the ordinance for 10 years. And I simply want to open it up, discussion, and see if anyone concurs with that line of thinking.
With that sunset, then...
Could you, a little closer to the microphone so everybody can hear you?
Yes, I will get as much closer.
Okay, I thought James was speaking.
Yeah, could we, if we did the 10-year, wouldn't we still have the problem of not fixing the roads and then in 10 years have the same problem of not all the roads fixed? We're talking about big, big time money to fix all the roads.
That's why, I'm sorry.
Go for it.
That's why I thought we didn't put, purposely put a sunset on it because we were told by our, by Adam, that the 10 years, this was a 12 to 15-year-plus project and putting a 10-year sunset on it, we'd have to go back to the taxpayers to continue on with the program. John, what's your feeling?
I thought that council had considered and rejected the idea of a sunset provision, but that's simply my recollection. I think you stated the reasons why that might have been council's decision or part of council's decision several weeks ago.
Does it have to be 10 years? Could we sunset it at 15?
If council were to decide to amend the question in the ordinance by, in effect, amending the ordinance, you could put in fairly easily a sunset provision. I drafted an example of how you would do that, that I believe has been distributed among council members, just as an example, and I picked arbitrarily, all by myself, 10 years just to illustrate how you would do it. If it were 15 years, or 20 years, or five years, that ending date would, would be changed to reflect what council wants to present to the voters. If you don't want a sunset, the question could be adopted as, and ordinance could be adopted as drafted. If you do want to impose or interject into the question a sunset provision, then I think it could be fairly easily done, but it needs to be done right now because we've got some certification deadlines to get it on the ballot.
It just seems, it just seems to me that to program something that's going to be inadequate with a 10-year thing is, is programming it to fail, is what it boils down to. How do you, how do you project out when you have contractors and all this other stuff? You know, when you get to that eighth year and you're doing ninth year and the 10th year, you know, it's, I don't know how you do it. It seems to me that if you want to put controls on it, we can put controls on it, but I think let's please give them a chance to finish it first.
I do agree with, with your recollection that the city engineer, that's Adam Lancaster, did report to the full council at a special council meeting that conquering the, the street improvement problem that we now have in Canyon City is going to be a long-term effort and 10 years won't do it, but it would be a good head start, I guess you could argue on the other side of the coin.
Yep. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I would just like to interject that in some of the conversations, some of the preliminary conversations that I've had with some people in the community, there's a great deal of skepticism of our fiduciary responsibilities and whether they're actually going to get the bang for their buck. And I think the concept of the sunset would give us an opportunity to roll this thing out and if the people did see the success of what it was we were doing, then we could go for a continuation at some point, but my concern is that we don't get anything passed and we're basically in the same position that we are today with a measly $400,000 to maintain and improve roads.
We could then put it on the ballot again. I mean, if we got to fix these problems, we're going to have bridge problems in 20 years from now, you know, we're going to have stuff to be fixed constantly.
And I'm not disagreeing with that at all, Jimmy, but the, the importance here is to get some funding as soon as possible and to show that we're good stewards of that money in the, in the rebuilding and, and maintenance of what it is that we do have. And there is some very large numbers thrown out there and, and nobody's going to be able to wave a wand and, and really spend that kind of money, but I think if we get the ball rolling and people, they, if they're experiencing in a good way what it is that we're doing with the money, then they would be more willing to extend it out further. I'm just afraid that if we don't have a sunset, that we get shut out and, and we're just back to square one.
I have a question for John. If we were to change and add this clause into the ordinance, would we need to take this back to a first reading?
No, we would not. That's why you have two readings, to give council an opportunity to amend what had passed on first reading after having received some public input, which is why we publish notice after adopt, after passage on first reading. So we wouldn't have to go back to square one. You could amend and what would be required if you do amend the ordinance and amending the question, we would be an amendment to the ordinance, is a second publication of the entire ordinance. That might postpone the effective date by a few days, but that's the only consequence and that might not even be a consequence, but ordinances become effective five days after passage on second reading or five days after publication, whichever come, second publication, if publication is required a second time.
Then if I understand you correctly, this will not, if we pass it with a modification, it will not come back to us in two weeks?
If you pass it with or without modifications tonight, it's going to the electorate and, you'll be out of, out of the loop until the votes are counted.
Thank you.
Councilman, Ketchmar, sorry.
Just, I'd like to follow up with that. You know, we've been told that if we did have that huge bucket of money, we couldn't spend it to get the job done in a, in a short time period because one of the big things is our water mains that need to be replaced underneath a lot of these streets. And so this has to be kind of a paced program and would there be an opportunity to do a 10-year sunset with an eight-year revisitation so that we didn't miss the contractors, you know, the people who are used to doing the roads instead of stopping it and then gearing back up, to have a continuum before we reach the end of the sunset if we did want to elect to extend it?
Let me respond to a couple of things. First, the discussion that had to do with having too much money to spend effectively had to do with a borrowing question. Should we, if the election, if the sales tax increase election were positive, should the city go out and borrow as much money as could be leveraged by having knowledge that the tax dollars would be coming in for the next however many years? So if, if we were, for example, to have a successful election and be able to leverage 30 to 40 million dollars, which would be within the realm of possibility, we couldn't spend 30 to 40 million dollars upfront right away in three years and there are some, some requirements with respect to borrowing that would make us spend that kind of money in that kind of timeframe. We could easily and effectively spend three to four million dollars annually and make significant road improvements with a straight 1% sales tax rate increase. With respect to the rest of your question, I don't think you would want to put into this question some eight-year revival-type language. What, what council could do if it were to adopt an ordinance that contained a question that had a sunset on the proposed tax is come back to the electorate before that tax were to sunset and ask that it be extended effective at the end of the original term. That'd be one way to do it. Of course, it would take two elections and two sets of decisions, et cetera, et cetera. It may or may not pass the second time, even if it did pass the first time. What the electors can do, and this is a point that, that maybe ought to be made or emphasized, if the electors should pass this question with or without a sunset provision, the only folks in the entire universe who could change the purpose for which the new tax would be used is the electors again in a subsequent election. So to the extent people are thinking, well, we're not sure we can trust those on city council or we like this group, but we don't know who's going to be the next group and they might do something behind our backs, that's not going to happen. The electors would specify that the tax be increased and the electors, if they adopt this question with or without a sunset, would specify how the dollars are to be spent and only those electors could change that in a subsequent election. So to the extent there are misconceptions or concerns regarding how the money might be used, the money would be used for street purposes if the question passes, again, with or without sunset language.
Okay, I, I do have a few comments on this. Councilman Ekstrom referred to a meeting where this had come up previously. It was a public meeting of sorts. It was a, a meeting where this idea was presented to the Canyon City Rotary Club. And there was also a little bit, I've seen one and there may have been more, letters to the editor in the newspaper. The, the letter in the newspaper raised some questions about essentially the trustworthiness of city council and that we will use the money appropriately. And the, the question itself says that the, the funds will be spent according to the city's pavement management plan, but there's still a lot of flexibility in that plan and there's nothing that says that it has to be done in this order to the best of my knowledge. And then speaking specifically about the presentation at the Rotary Club, the, the questions were fairly pointed and they dealt primarily with, one, basically, we don't trust you, you can't trust politicians, and we, we can't be assured that you're going to spend the money the way you said you're going to. And even though it specifies a pavement management plan, that's all it specifies. It doesn't go into any greater detail than that. And the other specific question we got was, how come there's no sunset? It's, and I think if council, well, I share Councilman Ketchmar's concern that we may completely fail in passing a sales tax increase if there isn't the sunset. And I think even with a sunset, if we and subsequent councils do a good job of applying these funds in accordance with the pavement management plan and the, the people who vote in Canyon City see the results 10 years from now or eight years from now, when, go back to the, the voters and say, we need to extend this to keep the program going, I think you're going to get a positive result. And, you know, I think we're far better off saying, we'll, we'll go for 10 years' worth of money with the probability of getting a lot more based on our ability to demonstrate success in what we're doing as opposed to saying, we're asking for this sales tax increase for the rest of everybody's lives. Now, of course, we all know that citizens at any time, I believe, have the option of doing it, an initiated question to eliminate the sales tax.
Not quite anytime, but pretty, at least one year.
Well, yeah, it's within the, the parameters of election cycles and things like that. So there's always a possibility that citizens can eliminate the tax. So, I mean, I, yeah.
Just one extra thing was the, the fact that we're spending 400,000 now. People were also concerned that if we did pass the 1%, that that existing money that's slated now might slip out of the, the road fund and, and find its way, find its way somewhere else. And I think that was one of the big concerns.
That, I believe that, although that certainly specifically came up as well, and I think that gives this council and future councils the opportunity to demonstrate that, yep, not only did we take the money raised by the sales tax, but we kept that 400,000 in there like we said we would. You know, and I, I've kind of equated this to the city right now is experiencing the benefits of, of a 10-year taper timeout and that's going to expire in a few years. And I think we've done a very good job of being fiscally responsible and I, I think, hopefully, what we will see as that timeout is getting set to expire, that we will go back to the citizens and say, look, we've done a really good job. We need to consider either extending this timeout or completely debruising. And I, I see these as two very similar sorts of issues in the sense of it's kind of, you get reward for performance. In any event, Councilman Brown?
I, I have one comment. I think it's, as I recall, city engineer Lancaster's comments were that it was a 30-year project. And so my concern would be with a sunset provision is that we may inadvertently give the illusion to our citizens that we intend to complete the project in a 10-year period of time. And I don't think there's any reasonable way that we can expect that. So in, in consideration of a, of a sunset, and I was present at the Rotary Club meeting as well, and there certainly were many, many questions there that, that became apparent that this council needs to answer to the citizens, but in that particular item specifically, if we are going to accept some kind of a sunset or include some kind of a sunset, that becomes incumbent upon us to do a very good job of educating the citizens as to what can be accomplished in that period of time. So my concern is by, by limiting it, I think we are also forced then to discuss some real specifics about how far we think we could get into or achieve the plan.
Councilman Ekstrom?
Thank you. I would like to make a comment regarding that 30-year plan. I had a chance to sit down with Mr. Lancaster and he actually went on to say that that 30-year plan is a model base. It was the parameters, 30, 30 years based on a certain dollar amount. The 1% sales tax is not going to meet that 30-year demand. We were short. It was 12, it was 12 million a year for 30 years. So with that being said, is that we're far short from getting what we need. The 1% is going to get us started. I concur that if we, if we have some type of sunset in there, that at least the citizens can rest assured that, all right, hopefully, we'll get something out of this over the next seven, eight years. We can come back with a question eight years from now, asking for more money. But this is, this is a plan that's not going to take 30 years, it's going to take forever and we need to get started somehow.
And that's, that's kind of where I was at with it, is that I was using the 12 to 15, but I think he was talking thoroughfares. But for the whole thing, it was going to be 30, 30-plus because it's really, we're asking for inadequate amount of money and we know we can't get any more in this.
And we know we can't get any more.
No. So we're going to have to go with what we get and I'm, that's why I'm not real strong about putting a sunset on it because... about putting a sunset on it, because it's inadequate to begin with, and then we're going to put a 10-year sunset on it, and then we've got to go back to the voters to get a, to, assuming that everybody is trustworthy and all that other stuff, we get another, we get another vote on people, and we're basically right back where we started from. So I guess that's how I'm looking at it. So we got a motion and a second, and what are we going to do?
We don't have either.
Yes, we do.
Yeah, we're in the discussion. It's, so, are there any other, are there any further thoughts on this idea? Do you want to leave it as it is? Do you want to make an amendment?
The motion on the table is to pass as drafted.
Is to pass as is.
There's been no motion to amend yet.
Correct. Twice? Could you call a roll?
Councilmember, we are voting to approve ordinance.
As written.
Eight on second reading. Councilmember Bates.
Aye.
Councilmember Ekstrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Shiraki.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown. Member Ketchmar.
No.
Councilmember Frida.
Aye.
Councilmember Weed.
No.
Approved by a majority vote.
I'm not sure what the noes were. My no vote indicated that I think it would have been a better idea to include a sunset. I am firmly behind this ordinance. I don't want that to be misconstrued in any way that I do not support the proposal to increase sales tax by 1% for the roads. I think we would have enhanced our prospects of passing it by sunsetting it, but.
However, the other side of that is, we have to sell a better product, simple as that. Do the people out there know it's going to take 30 years to do the roads? You know, do they know all this stuff? Have we sold that? Did you do it at the last meeting?
It's going to take longer than 30 years.
Well, I know, but I'm just, it won't be in my lifetime.
No, it'll be 60 to 90 years.
I think we need to put all the facts out.
Yeah. I, it's, I believe, I mean, is there any members of council who do not support the ordinance and just have a problem with the sunset versus no sunset issue?
The bottom line is, we need it.
Yes, okay. Moving on. Item number seven is a public hearing for the application for a special event liquor permit for the Sons of Italy. We'll open with a, we'll open the public hearing and ask for a report from the city clerk.
I'm going to throw this computer out. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Weed and members of council. This is John Karochi representing the Sons of Italy, who have applied for, to this council for a special event liquor permit for September 11th between noon and 11:00 p.m. and September 12th between 10:00 a.m. and 10:30 p.m. for their upcoming Italian festival. Notice of this public hearing was given by posting the location. However, due to the construction at the time of posting, the posting had to be done on a temporary sandwich board, which was not in full view at all times. However, after being notified, it was checked twice a day to ensure that it remained up in full view. This is their third annual festival that the organization has conducted, which will entail many events throughout the day-long, or two-day-long now, live entertainment and music. There will be food cart offering, Italian cuisine, and local restaurants. Alcohol sales for this event are being conducted as a fundraiser for the organization to continue their efforts to promote positive values of the Italian culture and heritage. At this event is free, and individuals aged 21 and up will receive a wristband. Underage participants will receive a black X on their both hands. Volunteers from this organization will be checking IDs to ensure legal drinking age and will assist with patrolling the perimeter of the event. Many who have attended the city's volunteer training and will be doing another training as needed, if so be. Upon review of the application, it's been determined that the appropriate fee has been submitted with the application. The diagram meets filing requirements. The applicant has applied for permission to use the park, plaza, and street, and the organization is in good standing with the Secretary of State's office. So with that, I'd have, open it up to any questions you may have of the applicant.
Councilman Bates.
Hi, John.
Hi, Ron.
You've been here before.
Times.
Are you ready?
I'm ready.
Okay. Are you familiar with the Colorado Liquor Code?
I am.
Is there a copy of the Liquor Code and filed with your organization?
Yes, there is.
How many volunteers do you plan on having for this event?
This year, probably around 35.
And how will they be trained in the Liquor Code and liquor laws? Or how many of those will be?
All of the folks that we have serving alcohol have either taken the training from Kathy and the city, or they're bartenders that have been working in Canyon City or in this area for years. But they've all had the opportunity to go to training. We do have a couple that have volunteered since our last meeting and since the last training that Kathy put on, and will try to twist her arm to have one more training.
Are you fully aware that you're responsible for the compliance of the Colorado Liquor Code, and that any violations of this code may be held against you and your organization, as well as future licenseings?
I'm very aware of that. We do have a lot of security on hand. We hire security each year for this event, and so, very aware.
Okay, this is your moment in the sun. You want to tell us people about it?
Sure. We did go to Friday evening, as well as all day Saturday. In the past two years, our attendance went from 2,000 to 3,000, and we expect at least 3,000 this year, weather permitting. The comments we received were mostly relative to a diversity of entertainment and activities that we have at the festival. We've, in the, we've made a few changes this year, and to try and reach all of the different groups, instead of just the ones that we've had last year and the year before on Saturday, we added a different band, a different type of band, Mystic Seven on Friday night, and we'll have a little different, little different setup there. We won't have a lot of vendor booths open, but we will have some food vendors available at the Friday night event, as well as a lot of security. And then, all day Saturday, we have a lot of similar events to what we've had in the past couple of years. Instead of a cooking contest, we have some of us doing cooking demonstrations, which we thought it'd be a little more fun. The cooking contests were, we just had just a few people participate in those. We had a lot of people eating food, but we didn't have a lot of people preparing food. So this year, we're going to make gnocchi and pastas and different things, sauces. So it'd be kind of a little more culturally inclined. And then we have the usual entertainment on Saturday. We'll have accordion players. We have some dancing this year. We hope the grass will hold up for that. I think it will. We have a jazz band, Wasabi, from Pueblo, again this year. And then we have the geezers closing, so we have a good diversity of entertainment. And of course, we have boche all day. We have, last couple of years, we haven't had a lot of Italian food there, and this year, we have tons of Italian food, pizzas, a couple of different sauces. We have a lot of pasta, sausage sandwiches, and then vendors like Orchard Hope will fill in the gap with hamburgers and hot dogs and pretzels and some non-Italian foods. We have the Salida Circus again this year, and they'll be performing onstage, as well as some roving vendors. And then we have, again, boche all day, and I, maybe I'll look at my list. Oh, we have a lot of children's activities, too, for about a four-hour, five-hour period. And the kids get to do a lot of fun things, and we try and do some cultural things for the children, so that they remember what it's like, and as they get older, to reach in a big pot of olive oil and spaghetti to find a cheap prize, you know, so it'd be a lot of fun. So that's kind of the highlights of the event.
Thank you, John.
Yes, sir.
John, are you aware that this is the inaugural event at the newly reworked Macon Plaza?
I'm honored, and I'm anticipating that the grass will be very ready.
Could you share with us some of your thoughts about what's been done over there?
Well, I like, I like the layout a lot, and I really like the fact that the Carafisher Park is part of that. We've, as you see on our application for space, we've asked for a little more toward the courthouse, so that if we do have a problem with vendors and we don't want to tear something up, or some particular section isn't ready, we'll have plenty of room on the pavement on Sixth Street. And then, we plan to use the area between, between Sixth Street and Seventh Street on Macon, in front of the courthouse, for vendor parking and make that a little easier for our vendors. But what we've done is rearrange where we want to put the stage and put that on the more permanent grass on the Carafisher Park, up in, kind of on the southwest corner. And then, that'll kind of protect some of the new grass from a lot of the dancing or trampling and that sort of thing. But the addition of power, the addition, hopefully, of some lighting, really helps us out. And I think it's a casual, we don't have people complaining about tripping on curbs and gutters and so forth. And so I think it's going to be a nice layout.
Well, I hope the weather cooperates for your, for your festival.
Done everything we could to make that happen. September's usually one of our drier months, so.
Okay, are there any further questions from council? Are there any comments from the audience? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion. Councilman Bates.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I make a recommendation. We approve the special event liquor permit for the Sons of Italy, September 11th and 12th on Macon Pla, Avenue Plaza.
I'll second that.
A second from Councilman Ketchmar. Is there any discussion? Call a roll, please.
Councilmember Bates.
Aye.
Councilmember Ketchmar.
Aye.
Councilmember Frida.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Councilmember Shiraki.
Aye.
Councilmember Ekstrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Thank you, John.
Thank you very much. I'd like to thank Kathy, also, and Denise, for a variety of things that they help with, including Kathy calling me 45 minutes before the meeting, saying, "Don't forget." She's very, very helpful, and Denise has been great to work with for three years. They've had to put up with me for this and wine tastings, and I really appreciate it, and our organization does. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is public hearing, an application for a special event liquor permit for Fremont Adventure Recreation. I'm going to open the public hearing and ask for a report from the city clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem and council members. This is Adam Hartman and Ashley Sack, who represent the organization, who's applied to this council for a special event liquor permit for September 19th between 2:00 p.m. and 11:00 p.m. for their Bikes and Brews Festival. Notice of this public hearing was given by the posting of the location, as well as the previous application. Due to the construction at the time of the posting, the posting had to be done on a temporary sandwich board, which was not in full view at all times. However, after being notified of this, it was checked twice a day to ensure that it remained in full view and up. This is the third liquor license event that this organization has conducted, from which there have resulted no concerns. The event will entail highlighting microbrews from around the state in combination with live music and food and soft drinks. The beer tasting event will be between 2:00 p.m. and 5:00 p.m., after which, at the time, the majority of the brewers will disband, and a select number of brewers will continue to serve. Alcohol sales at this event has been conducted as a fundraiser for the organization to continue their efforts to promote outdoor recreation in Fremont County. Individuals aged 21 and up will receive a wristband, and those under 21 will receive black X's on both hands. Participating brewers, who will be serving their own product, will be made aware of the protocol at inspection time. Volunteers from this organization have attended the volunteer training provided by the city, as they will be checking IDs to ensure legal drinking age, and will assist in patrolling the perimeter for the event. Upon review of the application, it's been determined that the appropriate fee has been submitted with the application. The diagram meets filing requirements. The applicant has obtained permission to use the park area plaza of the Sculpture Park from the Fremont Center for the Arts, and this organization is in good standing with the Secretary of State. So with that, I would open up any questions this council may have of the applicant.
Anyone?
Yes, I'll do it again.
Councilman Bates.
Hi, you ready?
Ready.
Aye. Are you familiar with the Colorado Liquor Code?
We are.
Is there a copy of the Liquor Code on file with your organization?
There is.
How many volunteers do you plan on having for this event?
For the total event, or just the liquor portion in Macon Plaza?
Okay.
Probably 70 for the whole day, and roughly one dozen for the distribution of beer.
And how will they be trained on the Liquor Code and liquor laws?
Any of them that haven't done this before with us, we'll take them through that same training, the PowerPoint tips training that we've received in the past, although we are using a lot of the same people who have poured for us in the past. And then, of the four brewers that will be there, three of them are providing their own folks, who have received training, as has the winery.
Are you fully aware that you're responsible for the compliance of the Colorado Liquor Code, and that any violations of this code may be held against you and your organization, as well as any future licenseings?
Yeah.
You want to give a little bit of a?
Sure, I'd like to. This is our third annual. The event is actually a bicycling event throughout the day. We have three different road ride options that we, that we've put together. There is a 100-mile course, as well as a metric century 61-mile, and then there is also a 50K route that goes out Red Canyon. That's all coordinated with Colorado State Patrol, as well as Canyon City Police Department, and then we also use the Sheriff's Department on the county roads. During the event itself, we contract with the city of, Canyon City Police Department for security, and similar to what was said with the last event, we provide food, as well as entertainment, throughout the day. So this year, we have, we have two bands, and we've stretched our timing by one hour, so we're all the way to 11 o'clock. The past two years, we've had riders come from all over the state, as well as many other states, and we're hoping for the same. Our numbers are on track to be very similar to what they were last year. So our total number that we expect to see in the park that day is probably closer to 500, so not nearly as large as Sons of Italy, but a good number, and we're excited to be back.
Thank you.
Are there any further questions from council? Any comments from the audience?
There is one thing I'd like to mention, just because since the time Kathy, that was submitted, there's one thing that we've proposed as a change, and I think it's best to say as much. Our rider lunch, meaning cyclists who come back and get food, begins at noon, and the way we had structured it is that beer wouldn't flow until 2:00 p.m., but it was brought to our attention by riders, saying it would nice, it would be nice to have a beer at that time. So we would like to go ahead and change that. I don't know if that can be done on the fly like this, so that we can actually start pouring at noon. If we can't do that, then we'll go back to the original plan, which was a 2 to 11 permit.
I just need council, when they make, when you make a motion to approve this, that you're going to make a motion with the knowledge that you're going to approve this in changing the 2:00 p.m. to noon. I don't have a problem with it at all. Since we approve these locally, and they don't go to the state until afterwards, they're just a notification-type organization, as far as the state, I have no problem with that.
Okay.
It's best to do it now before.
Okay, I thought as much.
Okay. There being no further comments, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion. Councilman Bates.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I make a recommendation. We approve the special event liquor permit for Fremont Adventures Recreation for September 19th at the Macon Avenue Plaza, and with a change or amendment to, from 2:00 to 12:00.
Noon to 11:00 p.m.
Noon to 11:00.
Noon to 11:00, okay, there you go.
I'll second that.
A second from Councilman Ketchmar. Is there any discussion on the motion? Call a roll, please.
Councilmember Bates.
Aye.
Councilmember Ketchmar.
Aye.
Councilmember Frida.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Councilmember Shiraki.
Aye.
Councilmember Ekstrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Weed.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
And the last item on the agenda tonight is citizens' requests to speak to council. Kathy, do we have any requests?
Yes, we have received two written requests to speak to council. The first one is from Charlotte Correntino. Charlotte, if you want to come to the podium, her address of record is 521 Woodlawn. She would like to speak to council about water drainage.
Charlotte Correntino, I'm sure. Charlotte Correntino, I'm sure that you have probably heard about the drainage problems at Sixth and Wood...
Charlotte, can you talk into the lower mic or bring that one down?
Okay. I'm sure that you've probably heard about the water drainage problems at Sixth and Wood, Sixth and Wood Lawn. Councilman Shiraki came to visit and saw what a mess that we had at our residence. My crawl space and my neighbor's crawl space has just been inundated with water since November of 2014. My issue is, to make a long story short, last year, they began installing a new sewer pipe in our alley. It was not a city project. It was done by the Fremont Sanitation District. But what they did, because there was so much water flowing into the sewer pipes of the sanitation district, when they sealed off their manhole, so that the drain water would not get into the sewer, it unleashed thousands of gallons of water into my crawl space and into my neighbor's crawl space. Now, since it was a Fremont Sanitation District project, Adam Lancaster was involved consulting with them about the drainage water. So what we have had so far is nobody wanting to do anything because, quote, "It wasn't their project." I have since met with John Havens and with Adam Lancaster, and I've also met with the Fremont Sanitation District, and will be at their board meeting tomorrow. And as, hopefully, we can get an agreement that, between the three parties, which is the city, Fremont Sanitation District, and the homeowners, we are very willing to do what we need to do to get the water to drain off of our property. The issue that I bring to the city is that we have a city-installed drain pipe in the alley, but it's very shallow, and it is way higher than my crawl space, and it is not working. As a matter of fact, I have two subpumps going full-time in my crawl space. It is a muddy mess that is draining more water than the city's drain pipe that is in the alley. After talking with Adam and with John Havens this last week, you know, they recommended and suggested cooperation between Fremont Sanitation District and the city to install a new drain pipe in that alley, make it deeper. Adam suggested that if Fremont Sanitation District would do the digging, because the city doesn't have the equipment to dig trenches that deep, you know, that he would, the city would be willing to put in the new drain pipe. So what I am here is to ask for your support and give permission to whoever, the power is it be, to go ahead and do that, so that we solve this constant drainage problem on our property. The city had installed monitoring holes all along the alley that were there for a month, and the lowest level we had was 42 inches of water that was coming down the alley. So, we have a real problem. I know it's not unique, but for 25 years, we had no problems when I was at that. And my neighbor, who is Tom Capsid, his wife, who is at the west of me, has, that house has never, ever, ever had a problem for 35 years. So that's why I'm here to ask your support for this project.
Colby?
Thank you, Mayor. Charlotte, I had a quick question. Is this surface water runoff, or is this like some kind of a spring? That's like a natural spring?
Well, I don't know if it's a spring. I know it's definitely surface water, so that when it rains, it's even worse. Now, we have had, we have not had, my subpump has not stopped for the last four months. And I know we had a very heavy rainy spell, but we have not had that for at least two months.
So you had no problem until the sanitation department came in and modified?
Correct.
And maybe closed off their pipe, which was draining?
Thousands of gallons of water. I saw the videos before they sealed off their manhole. Jeff Blue at the sanitation district showed me the video, and just thousands of gallons of water were pouring into that manhole. Of course, they can't have that, because they can't process or treat groundwater or stormwater.
Colby, to answer that question, I've been out there and looked at it. We would need to research that. It is a possibility. It is a lot of water.
As I think council knows, staff's been looking at this for quite some time. The issue appears to be groundwater, not surface water, but nevertheless, Mr. Lancaster thinks that, based on discussions with Sand District and his own opinions, that we might be able to come up with a three-way solution if needed, and that would involve the city, the Sand District, and if necessary, the property owners. The property owners appear to be on board. We met with both affected property owners the other day. It is Adam Lancaster's intention to bring this issue up in your upcoming, what is it, August 19th, Public Works Meeting for more detailed discussions. But what he was hoping that Charlotte would hear tonight is that the city would back a solution offered by the city engineer. It may or may not do the trick, but we think it has the best chance of doing the trick. And probably, the details are best heard from Adam rather than me, and we're prepared to present him and his solutions this Wednesday.
That would be following the Sand District meeting tomorrow night.
Today's Monday. The Sand District's tomorrow, so we'll have input from them, and hopefully, their commitment by the time we revisit this subject on Wednesday.
I don't know if Adam's planning on attending the Sand District meeting, but if he's not there, if you make a point of reporting to him the results of that meeting, so that we'll have some further input for our meeting on Wednesday.
I think Adam does intend on attending, and I just may go with him, and we need to at least show that we're trying to reach a workable solution. This has dragged on too long.
One more thing I would like to point out as a potential issue here, is I think that there's a ditch that runs north of the Fruitland, maybe?
Fruitland ditch, and the ditch in the vicinity of these properties is dry. It's a non-issue.
Okay, so it's not, it's not a leaking ditch, then? You're pretty certain of that?
I, we're as close to certain as we can be.
Okay.
That was initially brought up when we had a problem, and we called the ditch company. I forget what the gentleman's name was, and he assured us that that Fruitland ditch run up Fairview and is no longer crosses, because at one time, it did run perpendicular to the alley behind our houses.
The city has probed the old channel, and it's dry and empty.
Well, thank you. And we certainly will be addressing this further on Wednesday. Sure.
That meeting begins at 4:00.
And Adam intends to bring it up under other business, so it'd be once again toward the end of the meeting, but be there at 4:00?
So, other, so the council understands, too, it's not just her property that the water's coming up. It's the cracks in the street where it meets the concrete. It's the water shut-off cap. It's coming out of there. It's coming out of the sidewalk. It's a lot of water. Not just her property, but it is affecting her property.
Okay. Kathy, next?
Yes, we have one more written request to speak to council. That is Lisa Heims, 3165 Grand View Avenue. She would like to speak to council about co-mom.
Good evening. I know you already discussed co-mom, but I just felt so necessary to come up here this evening and compliment not only our city, the people from the school district, and the citizens within our community that worked so hard to make co-mom possible. For those of you that weren't there, I know Pat was there. It was absolutely amazing. There was over 1,000 volunteers, working 12-hour days for four days. Of course, we had our setup day on Thursday, the two-day event, and then the breakdown day on Sunday. When they first came to me in November about wanting to have co-mom within our community, I had some reservations about how many volunteers we could pull together for this, and I had concerns about our ability for the community to pull together and feed these volunteers. Because, I mean, it isn't like they can leave for a lunch hour. They stay there the entire 12 hours. And co-mom was able to get more than adequate food to come into the facility. They had people that volunteered to cook the food that was donated that had not been cooked. The compliments that we got from the doctors, from the hygienists, and from the other volunteers that have gone to many, many co-mom meetings, said it was one of the best laid-out co-moms they had ever seen, with the best volunteers. The food was some of the best food they'd had. In years past, they have run out of food. And I just like, would like to compliment our community for stepping up to the plate and making this a great event. So, thank you very much, and thanks to the city.
Thank you, Lisa.
Lisa, didn't you do a bunch of the exit interviews with some of the people?
I did, I did exit interviews. That's where I was. And I want to tell you, I was the last person they saw before, I mean, there was a whole lot of us doing exit interviews. I was only one of many. There were people from Kansas, Nebraska, New Mexico, Oklahoma, and one from Kentucky that I personally saw as they left. They came here just to go to co-mom. Well, of course, I took a great opportunity to tell them how wonderful Canyon City and Fremont County was. I had a box of visitors' guides that I had all over, and especially for our doctors and hygienists to get them back down to this area. Many of our tourist attractions offered discounts. I know that one of the dentists from Denver treated his entire office staff and their families to the train on Sunday. Others did go to the bridge. They dined at our restaurants. They stayed in our hotels. We benefited in more ways than just our community receiving free dental care. But in the exit interviews, the people in tears, because they were able to get, the women that had put their kids through school and had put their own needs on the back burner, because they knew having their kids taken care of were more important, were able to get flippers to replace missing teeth, which meant they could get a better job. And just the whole event was amazing. I had a gentleman that I happened to know that's a disabled veteran, and doesn't really have a positive outlook on life, and that man sat there in the chair going through the process with tears in his eyes, because he couldn't believe how amazing this process was. And I just, I got to tell you, I'm going to work every one of them. I hope you guys don't mind. I'm going to take the days off from the chamber, and wherever co-mom is every year, I will go work it from now on. It's that good. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Lisa. Is there any other business to come before council? If not, we're adjourned.